Are we on and rolling? All right. I will call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. It's October 22nd. This is the Board of Selectmen meetings. Welcome, everybody. For those who are able, please stand and I will salute.
(inaudible)
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 So, we have no minutes to approve.
We'll move on to warrants. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number nine for $352,016.11. School warrant 1024 for $77,098.78. General warrant 1025, $72,116.49. The wastewater treatment update, 1026, $1,347,837.23. And the CDBG and NV21 warrant, number 1027, for $12,185.12.
So moved.
Second. And, Al in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there any discussion?
No.
Okay. All right. So, the next thing on the list is spending requests. We don't have any this week, so we will move right along. Old business, general bylaw committee. We are looking for three members to serve on the general bylaw committee. We would like to appoint those positions on November 5th. We've had a few letters of interest. So, if anybody is interested in serving on that committee, please let Ashley know in the Selectmen's office. Selectmen@northbrookfield.net is her email. And you will appoint on November 5th and get that started. We do, we, the next thing is chairman sign CASL. We have already approved that. This is for a complete streets extension contract. So, we have already approved that contract. But Jason needs to sign it and he's not here this evening. So, he will do that as soon as he's back. But it's already been approved. New business. We have a poll hearing at 6:15, so we'll hold off on that for a little bit. And sewer operator, we're up to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, first I would just like to apologize to the board for not notifying you guys or getting approval prior to making the decision to hire an operator and move away from the assistant. Tristan had showed some pretty aggressive interest for about a month. He called several times, showed up to the plant a few times just to ask on how things were going. So, given that we hadn't had any applicants in seven months, I thought it would be wise of us to move and to bring Tristan in for an interview and potentially look into hiring him. So, you know, the board, obviously, we had interviews, board sewer commissioners were there. They, they, we actually had a meeting, I think it was the first weekend in October, and we voted in that meeting, at the sewer commission meeting, to get away, move away from the assistant and hire an operator instead.
Okay.
So, they approved that. And then ultimately, we brought a few guys in for interviews and we decided to go with Tristan. Tristan's a young guy. He brings some young blood and youth to our department, much needed.
That's good.
Like I said, he's young, he's pretty much fresh out of high school. He has worked for local masons and electricians, so he's no stranger to physical hard work, which was something we thought was important. So, yeah, so this is Tristan Gilman.
Nice to meet you, Tristan.
Hi, Tristan, nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
He's obviously our new sewer operator. He also lives local, which I thought was fantastic. He lives in Northbrookfield, about 10 minutes away.
Fantastic.
Once we're done the upgrade, he's going to do a lot of, a lot of call-ins after hours. So, we thought it would be nice to have somebody local. We've seen in the industry when guys live 45 minutes away, there's a lot of issue with response time and things like that. So, I know you had some questions. I don't know if you want to touch on those or maybe we just...
Yeah, I think the main thing was I just wanted to know how that was going to affect, you know, I totally trust everything that you are doing, but I think for me, I just wanted to know, well, I talked a little bit with Ashley today, so I understand Tristan's going to take on some training to kind of move into some of those, that care of the little positions.
Yeah, so the plan right now was, the plan was to just hire him as an operator. Like I said, we went, we had, we went seven months without, we had one applicant. We hired the guy, he lasted two weeks, and he said this wasn't for him. After that, we had no interest. We're desperate for help down there. We, we added about 50% more in equipment. And, you know, we just, it's valuable that we get somebody on staff and on board. And the nice thing is we're, we actually started yesterday, training and startup on all the new equipment, and it's going to be nice to have somebody here to see all that. Because, you know, if you hire somebody four months from now, they don't get training on all the new equipment, and they have tons of questions. And so, I think it just made, made a lot of sense. So, from a budget standpoint...
Yes, that's the last question.
Yeah. It should have, it's definitely not going to have any negative effect on, effect on the budget.
Okay.
Because the plan is we'll pay him out of the assistant salary.
Okay.
There'll still be quite a bit of money left over in that salary at the end of the year.
Yep.
I still think the D E P is going to require us to hire another guy.
Yep.
I've had some thoughts in my head from a financial standpoint. Does it make sense for the town to maybe get away from hiring an assistant and maybe to bring in another operator? Financially, it will be, save some money there.
Okay.
Obviously, that's an amount of money. You know, financially, I just really unsure about the, about the outlook of the future of that department. So, I'm not sure that we can afford to have four people on staff that are making, you know, current rates that sewer operators get. So, from a budget standpoint, there's no effect. We have the money to keep him, to hire him full-time. And then, what was, was there another question?
Yes. So, as far as the duties go, so what are you still having to, well, you don't have to, it doesn't need to go into specifics, but just, how much are you still taking on as, as extra duties without having an assistant versus an operator? How does, does that affect anything or are you able to?
Initially, it affects a lot because Tristan has to be trained. So, for instance, yes...
Yeah, beyond that, I guess.
Yeah. It, it doesn't really take anything off my plate.
Okay.
It's going to be about six months to a year before I think Tristan's really confident and can take some of that lab work and all the other stuff that I, you know, the multiple jobs that I'm having to do right now to keep that place running. But we didn't have a choice, you know, there was nobody. So, obviously, if, you know, somebody had applied sooner that had experience, then that certainly would have helped. But, you know, we just, it's just nobody. So, it's not going to do anything initially, not even the first six months, I don't think.
Okay.
It's going to do anything. Obviously, it's going to help in the plant, like down in, you know, the operations and things like the groundskeeping and stuff like that that I'm having to do.
Mm-hmm.
But as far as like, you know, fulfilling some of the responsibilities of the assistant, you know, we're just not, we're not anywhere near ready to, to have him take over some of those responsibilities.
Right, okay. Okay. I guess I was just wondering timeline too for you, you know, continuing with what you're doing now. Because we did have a conversation about that.
Yeah.
So, I think we might have to, we might have to revisit that, I don't know, because we did put a...
Yeah. Yeah, so it was, it was a 90-day review.
Yeah.
As far as I know, we're still, we're still on track for that.
I think we are.
Yeah.
I think early November, maybe, end of November? Close to end of November? Okay, all right. So, we're, so we've got a little bit of time, so probably revisit.
I think, you know, when, when that time comes, I think it makes, makes sense to maybe just get away from that. You know, 90 days is up. We, we can, we can discuss it when the time comes, but...
Okay.
There's still, there's still a heavy workload for, for me down there.
Yep.
That's just, that's just the truth. The goal would be to hopefully maybe get Tristan up to speed, you know, give him some training, let him get a license.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, maybe he'll have interest to move into a higher position. Like I said, maybe we get away from calling it the assistant, and we just call him the operator or something, but, you know, that's something we can discuss. But if he's interested and he, and he sticks around and things work out, I think there's potential for him to move up.
Intensive.
There's, I, I really mean it when I say there's just nobody out there.
Okay.
Anytime you get somebody, he's coming from another plant and, you know, just from like a wage standpoint, it's tough to attract help to this town, you know, it's, that's just a cold hard fact, you know? Most good operators are making 80, 90 grand minimum, and you just can't pay operators. And so, the only help we're going to get is guys that are coming, you know, fresh off the, you know, out of school or...
Well, thank you. I really appreciate this update and I think this is a really great plan and so I'm excited. I'm excited that you have help. Tristan, thank you. And John, you...
Yeah, I think you guys pretty much answered almost every question that I had. Only thing I was just going to add in is obviously he's going to need to be licensed. And I don't know, is that something that the department can cover or is that an expense he's going to have to take on himself?
Yeah, so he doesn't, if you're just an operator, you really don't have to have a license. Obviously, the state, you know, recommends that you do, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
And they're, they're aware of the staffing shortages throughout the state. I guess I can't speak for the country, but throughout the state. So, you know, they're definitely not going to, they're definitely not going to have a problem with it. They'll probably be pleased that we found somebody to come on. But ultimately, the goal would be to get him a license. I haven't taken a license in, or examined eight years. They were $100 eight years ago. I'm sure they've gone up. So, most towns that I've worked for in Northbrookfield, the way it was, it's always, it's kind of just been a rule of thumb. If he takes the exam and he doesn't pass, he's responsible for, for taking over that cost. If he passes the exam, the town will reimburse him for it. And then moving for any training hours that he needs to maintain that license, the town pays for that also, reimburses him for that. So, ultimately, it's going to be up to him what he wants to do, if he wants to put the time into working to get the license.
Right.
He, he's aware that according to the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the union, if Tristan gets his license, he can, he's eligible for more compensation. So, you know, that's something that he's aware of and I'm sure he's going to work hard towards that. But ultimately, that would be up to him on how he wants to handle it.
Great. Sounds like a good plan.
All right, so let's make it official. We'll entertain a motion to appoint Tristan as our new sewer operator.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? I probably don't have any discussion in between, but we did.
That's it.
So, Al in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. All right, so our next thing is appointing a library trustee. Hello. Welcome. I'm sorry, I don't have a name. We can't do, we have a letter. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just get in here. Things are a little bit out of order, don't I say? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Ashley Place. Okay, welcome. So, I guess I would just welcome you to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Hello, my name's Ashley Place. We recently moved to town and the first thing that we did was go to the library to start volunteering, my son and I. My children are in the Northbrookfield schools and I have an extensive background in municipal government and libraries. Both my older children were raised in the library alongside me. So, I thought it was a great fit to get to know our town by serving the community from our beautiful building down here. And after spending some Saturdays, I started noticing some things and offered my help in any way. And then I was contacted by these wonderful ladies that they had a seat open. So, here I am.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
First of all, thanks for jumping right in.
Sure.
And we do have a wonderful library down there all the time.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Ashley to the trustee, as a trustee for the library.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you for stopping by.
Yes, yeah, I'm welcome.
Thank you.
Al in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Official, you will need to be escorted by our town clerk.
Yep.
And she is in the office tonight, I think it's 10:07.
Oh, okay.
So, she's there now, but otherwise, she's there during the day, usually eight to two-ish.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to stop in there. Thank you.
All right.
6:15.
6:15 on the dot. So, let's do our poll hearing. Do we need to switch anything officially? Will there be a poll hearing?
I think you have to motion to open the poll.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to open the poll hearing.
So moved.
Second. And, Al in favor?
Aye.
So, I will, all right. So, this, I'm going to turn it over to you, I think you're here for the poll hearing and introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Colton Marshall. I'm the representative for National Grid for the installation of this pole. This is a sole-owned National Grid pole with the purpose of installing a, what's called AMI, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Wireless Pole Antenna.
All right. And do we have any butters? Okay, okay. So, I will make a motion to approve this poll.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, what's the location?
It's on 59...
Donovan Road.
Yeah, Donovan Road. It's going to about 59 East Brookfield Road, which is owned by the town of Northbrookfield.
Most of these areas were the town of Northbrookfield, so... Oh, all right. There we go.
Yeah, I think there's like a muffler shop or something.
Was it, I have a question. Was this to bring power? I'm sorry, in another world, we'll be talking about it, but is this to bring power to the new highway line?
No, there isn't power at the highway line already.
This pole can be built off of in the future, but as far as I can tell, its main purpose is to support an antenna for wireless metering technology. Helps with reduced outage time and lets us know where outages are.
Is it the standard size type pole?
Yes, I believe it's a 35 or 40. I think it's a 35-foot pole, which is standard. 35, 40 foot, both of those are standards. It's nothing extremely...
It's a wood pole.
Wood.
Thank you.
What does the antenna, is it higher than the pole?
No. Well, it's, it's going to be on the top of the pole, but I think they're three feet tall.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right. Al in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you should have a little call, right, sit here.
Oh, okay. So, from Canada, yes.
Montreal, yes.
It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. All right, so I will entertain a motion to close this poll.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Okay, so the next thing is a discharge of a lien. Let's scroll back down and get there. So, this is a lien at 331 North Main Street, Northbrookfield. And Ashley, do you have any information on this?
This was a CDBG housing rehab. They finished everything on it. So, they placed a lien on it while they're in construction and then the construction has been completed, so I favor the settlement.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to discharge the lien.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Al in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the next thing is accepting the health insurance rates for retirees. Mike, do you mind sharing the information on this?
Yeah.
Oh, I, no, I haven't, I just...
All right, yes. And we were a little disappointed with the rate increase. This is for the retirees. Rates for MedX2, current rate is, for MedX2 is $186.90. The new monthly rate will be $219.21. That's a 17.29% increase. BlueMedRx is currently at $173.37. It's going to $215.01, which is a 24% increase. Total blue is 160, 360. It's going to $434, again, a 20% increase. Managed care for seniors, managed care for, sorry, managed blue for seniors two. Individual is at $176.53. It's going to $194.67. That's a 10.28% increase. That's the smallest increase on here. BlueMedRx, 173, goes to $215. That's a 24.02% increase, the same as the MedX2, BlueMedRx. And the total, the total blue for the managed, blue for seniors two goes from $349 to $409. That's a 17.08% increase. These are large increases. I, I mean, it's possible that we could go out and look for another company, but I don't know that we'll do much better.
And this is something that's coming from the state, is that right?
This is actually from Maia.
From Maia directly, okay. There was changes made to Medicare and that's what initiated the huge increase. All right. Okay, so tonight we have to vote to accept this or we decide to try and find other rates? Is that what?
We could do that. I don't know if there's an option to negotiate these because these are pretty much standard products.
Maia goes out to bid for these rates, I believe, so they will, oh, but yeah, I think that's the way I understood. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure they...
Okay, I don't know if that...
Yeah.
I don't know about the, they don't do that for the regular retirees. That's voted on by Maia Trust, but this may be third party.
Oh, I don't know. I, maybe I'm thinking of the regular health insurance and health for retirees.
I mean, the problem with this is we only have to, till 11/124 to sign this. If we're going to go ahead and it would probably be something we want to do for next year.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve these rates.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
I think with this tight timeframe, there's not a lot you can do this year, but I definitely think this is something we should look into next year.
We have information from Maia on the group Medicare programs here and we can provide that to any senior that wants to call in. And if they want to come into the office, I can go through that, that way back.
Okay.
You have that information, it's right here.
I do, yep. I've got that in here too, so. All right, Al in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next thing is to review the conceptual drawings for School Street Extension, and that's part of the Vibram project. So, I don't think there's anything for us to vote on tonight, we're just talking about it. So, we'll share with everyone that Vibram has offered to redo some of the sidewalk around, going up School Street to Main Street, sort of that little park area. What is that, no? Am I wrong?
Well, yeah, we're doing it, they're offering their support.
Oh, gotcha.
They did that, they provided the engineering for it.
Okay.
Which was a, they took up the cost.
And on the tail end, they'll be providing some financial assistance, but it's still a town project on town land.
Okay. This is part of the Complete Streets and the downtown development?
It's the phase two process.
It's going to be added as a chain in order to the sidewalk work on North Main Street.
Got it. Okay. I mean, I knew it was sort of, they were, yeah, it was part of that.
This is part of phase one, though?
Yeah, there's additional funds available in the phase one project, so...
Right, that's what they told us, might have to wait until spring, depending on...
Right, so just continuing that around the corner of School Street up to where Vibram's already done the work on their end, so.
I guess we could have a phase one A.
Right.
Because it is an extension of one.
Yeah, that's all covered under that original grant that was received for Complete Streets.
So, this is where some of that additional money is going?
Right. The original part of the project came on the budget and there was also some additional funding made available, so it was...
Right.
Would Vibram do kind of complete that, what you're thinking of?
To complete it, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They did, Vibram did do the engineering on that part, so that's where the plans came from, they worked with the engineer on Complete Streets to incorporate it all on the corner there, so.
And to make it a cohesive project, from their project out to ours.
Yeah, so in that particular section of School Streets, their need of help, you know, railing's been a disaster for years and so...
Yes. And there's no entry into the little park from the parking area on School Street, so I love that they've added two entry points along that road. And from that plan, it looks like it's ADA compliant, I believe, and wheelchair accessible?
Yes.
There's a rampway or kind of a...
Yeah, there's a ramp.
Yep.
Near the Vibram. And there, well, there's still the ramp down the other end, but it's not ADA compliant, so to make sure that other one was.
Right.
But they're also adding a stairway.
So, I think that was great.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think the main benefit is that they're removing the retaining wall and lowering the sidewalk down to sidewalk level, so when you get out of the vehicle, you can get right onto the sidewalk and not have that wall in front of you.
Yes.
So, you don't have to walk all the way around.
Yeah.
Okay. So, where's the crosswalk? This is School Street border and Main Street. Okay. Yeah, so this way. So, there's some opening space between our cars, so you can actually see the crosswalk?
Yeah, there won't be any cars parked on the border. They're doing away with the...
The first space.
First space on, well, yeah, first space on Main Street, they're doing away with that parking, or the driveway to the gas station.
Right.
So, there'll be no parking there. And then they're doing away with, actually, it might be two space, it's hard to tell, but at least one space to kind of make it more of a curve around the side.
Well, it opens it up to, so people can see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Granted, I wasn't here when this was done.[1666.41] I wasn't here when this was done. The design was done on the first phase. But I've been told, and I think it's correct, that we were responsible for the engineering, correct?
The first stage, yes.
So this engineering work, if Vibram had not taken care of it for us, we would have had to go to town to get the money.
Oh, okay. Even if it was.
We couldn't get that.
We couldn't do it from the grant.
We couldn't get the engineering money from the grant.
Oh, that's right. I remember that actually.
Construction and construction supervision. So this really helped us because we could immediately go into the design work. They did it for us. We oversaw it and they paid for it, so now we have a plan. We don't, otherwise we'd be getting to design after the upcoming town meeting.
Right, okay, great. This is wonderful. And then to just sort of piggyback on that, I want to let people know too that phase one of the downtown development project is starting soon. We don't have an exact date.
It's supposed to be tomorrow, I believe.
Tomorrow. I think tomorrow they're doing a walkthrough. That's what I understand. And they're, they're just finalizing a few things. But maybe they're starting and they're just finalizing other portions of it, so maybe we ought to get that.
We'll find out soon.
But it could be as soon as tomorrow. I know they have things set up and they're gonna start reverting traffic and for some of these places, so. That will be that. And then.
Sure, she told me she could print out a copy of the plan, so I'm gonna ask her to do that. So if anyone wants to come into the office to review.
Oh, okay.
I will get those available for me to go look at.
Fantastic. Yes, if anyone wants to check out the plans, it's gonna be really beautiful. I'm very excited about it. And the next thing is the Thanksgiving Day Gobble Wobble and First Night Out.
Okay, well, we don't have all the details, but Gobble Wobble is being sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Committee. It'll be Thanksgiving morning. We'll have more details by our next meeting. But yeah, we're trying to get some events going and that's gonna be one of the first ones. So and then we're also looking towards doing a first night event. Possibility of a bonfire. We can get that permission from the fire department. But yeah, so more details will be coming and so stay tuned.
Thank you Nancy.
Thank you Nancy, yes.
That sounds excellent. I'm glad.
Yeah, the Gobble Wobble's five K and it's gonna be in the school.
It looked like it was different, different distances, one K, three K, five K?
Yeah, yeah, but the maximum was over five K.
Okay, and is it, it's all gonna be within the school complex or?
It's gonna be in that area, schools and all down the road. More details will be coming next time.
Okay, and will we need to, I mean, you can give us more details next time, but will we need to close down any roads for that?
No. Nancy's working with the chief, since I've spoken with the chief, so.
To figure out.
What we need to.
Perfect, thank you. Next thing, Kathy is not here. She, I think it's gonna come a different night for the Deco Radar Town Announcements. AIA Contract Amendment. Next.
This, I guess anyone just says owner aren't here can sign it. I was asked to sign it, but I haven't been given that authority. I don't know if you want me to sign future ones or not, but at least I'd like to discuss this one. This is a, if this is a change order, the first change. These have three components to it. This is for the former Hucks Building. The first one was additional patching of exterior metal panels for twenty-five hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. If you recall, on the back of the building, there were various penetrations that were for different things, pipes. I think there was one for an exhaust stack on the oil, waste oil heater, things like that. And that's just patching the back, so it's air tight. And that had to be done before the insulation was installed.
Yes.
That was the smallest item. The second item on there was the roof cost, additional cost of fifty-six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-two cents. The way that was originally constructed, there was a metal roof and there was insulation attached to the bottom of it. That roof has leaked over time into the insulation and it's caused soaking, possibly mold, certainly deterioration in the insulation. So what this will involve is removing the insulation from the bottom of the metal roof. And then it's going to have hard insulation installed on top of the metal roof before the new roof is put on.
Okay.
So.
So we're removing the interior insulation, but keeping the roof that's currently there and then adding insulation?
The roof for the next, for the new roof, and that's gonna go on top of it. The insulation panels, rigid insulation will go on top of that and then a new roof over the top of that.
Okay.
And that's what the fifty-six thousand is for. The final item is EPW Plumbing Fixtures Mechanical and Compressed Air System. Added cost, twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. It's not really an added cost. It's a reallocation of cost. Because that was supposed to have been done by the Bay State students. But they have not been able to come in because of scheduling issues.
Right.
So it's going to be done by the contractor. Under the original plan, we were gonna buy these items for the Bay State students. Now they're gonna buy them for their own contractors. Potentially, they may be getting a better deal than we were getting anyway. But that is not considered additional spending, but it's certainly a reallocation of cost to the contractor.
Right.
Alright, total cost for this was, what was the total cost?
Eighty-six thousand eighty-seven dollars, sixty-two cents. Yep. So I will entertain a motion to approve that change order.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
What, do you want to sign?
I can sign if you'd like, yeah.
That's fine.
And I knew that this was, I knew the roof was a concern when we originally started this project. So I think that, for me anyway, was not a surprise, but. Alright, I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment period. Does anyone have a?
Yeah, more kind of announcements. The committee, the Parks and Rec Committee and without a volunteer to have been working on the trails in the town forest park. So been cleaned up, so like make people down, have a nice hike while the weather's nice and enjoy the trails. One trail is kind of reverted and it's going in front of the rocky outclothing. So that makes a nice change of scenery for that area. This is of course on the parking area, that trail section there. Also been working on the trails around the disc golf course a bit too. So it's looking pretty good, so you know, come out and enjoy. Well, I think, you know, anybody's familiar with the Uniquely Quabin magazine that comes out four times, three or four times a year?
Oh, I think I, yeah, it's like a little magazine.
Yeah, it's a little kind of regional, local magazine that covers Brookfields and that area. There's a little article on North Brookfield in there, this edition. Starts on page twenty-six and with a couple of photos from courtesy of the North Brookfield Historical Society in there, so.
Did you show us a proof of that before it was published at one point?
No.
No? Okay.
There was another magazine like a year, last year, that was the Worcester Magazine, that had a little article in there. No, this is no, this fall, so Uniquely Quabin Magazine.
Alright.
So it's been a long one.
Okay.
I've seen them in print around two places, but I don't remember all hands where I see.
Awesome. That's cool. Thank you. This is a beautiful time of year to go out on the trails, with all the trees changing color. Thank you.
And no bugs. Great time here. Check out the trails.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Alright, so I will, we just have a couple of announcements. We are currently transitioning, we lost our town collector, so we are transitioning toward finding a new town collector. So please be patient as we manage that. Your checks may take an extra week or two to clear, but we are working on it, I promise. And I just want to say one other thing. The Trail of Terror is this weekend at the Brookfield Orchards. The North Brookfield Theater Guild and the Brookfield Orchards are partnering for a really scary K-ride through the orchards. And I saw some of it set up and it looks amazing and it's gonna be frightening, so please go. They're open Friday, Saturday, Sunday after dark. I think it starts at six and the last ride is at nine P.M. And I think, I believe the orchard is having a bunch of other things going on during that time too. So if you have little ones that are too scared, there's other things they can do. Alright, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for, this is an add-on, emergency add-on, for reason number eight, to consider applicants for employment. This is for the collector position. And then we will come out of executive session just to adjourn this meeting, so. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.